Good evening. Welcome to the March 20th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time, I will call the meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. First up tonight, we have a couple of proclamations. The first one I have is in recognition of National Safe Place Week. I think we have Angie here from PCYS. Hi Angie, how are you?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and read this. I don't know if you have something you want to add about Safe Place Week afterwards, but you can come and join us at the podium. But I'll read this first. Whereas, the youth of Stillwater will determine the future strength of our country and be the bearers of our democracy. And whereas, youth need a safe haven from various negative influences such as child abuse, substance abuse, depression, and crime, and youth need readily available resources to assist them when faced with circumstances that compromise their safety. And whereas, the Safe Place program is committed to protecting the youth of Stillwater by offering access to immediate help and safety for young people seeking assistance and guidance. And whereas designated locations where youth can get information and immediate help, Safe Place is founded businesses such as restaurants, convenience stores, movie theaters, and community buildings such as fire stations, libraries, and public transportation vehicles. And whereas, the success of Safe Place is based on public-private collaborations between businesses, school systems, fire departments, law enforcement, and a network of volunteers. And whereas, Stillwater is committed to demonstrate the importance of youth safety prevention and community response to identified needs. And whereas, the Safe Place program must meet performance standards relative to outreach and community relations to receive direct federal assistance as set forth in the Runaway and Homeless Youth Act. And whereas, more than 1,500 communities in 38 states administer the Safe Place program at more than 22,000 locations. More than 387,000 youth have been helped at a Safe Place location or received counseling by phone as a result of Safe Place information received at school and through community presentations. And whereas, since the program's inception in 1983, more than 15 million youth have been educated through National Safe Place Network's Safe Place Outreach efforts, familiarizing them with the Safe Place sign, and providing them with information about how to seek help in order to stay safe. And whereas, increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access the help they need. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim this week, March 20th through March 26th, as National Safe Place Week. And we thank Angie and her team at PCYS very much for the work that they provide in and helping with this program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right. Okay. Just want to thank the mayor and city council for recognizing the importance of National Safe Place Week. We continue to have 55 sites in Ping County, and that's in all the six communities that are available for youth to access help and come to our shelter. Still feels a really critical need in our area as well as surrounding counties. We have quite a few kids that come from other counties to our shelter. We have two to four kids every month, if not more. I think we've had up to eight or nine in one month that have accessed Safe Place due to abuse at home, so just really appreciate it and be back next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
and maybe some other representatives here from the Stillwater League of Women Voters. So I'll read the proclamation and then we'll recognize you for comments. Whereas, James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas, every citizen in our participatory democracy has an inherent right to access to government meetings and public records. And whereas, an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. And whereas, the protection of every person's right to access public records and government meetings is a priority of the Stillwater City Council. And whereas, the Stillwater City Council is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operations and seeks to set a high standard in this regard. Whereas, the Stillwater City Council commits during this Sunshine Week commemorating the anniversary of James Madison's birth and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online, and to ensure that all meetings of deliberative bodies under its jurisdiction are fully noticed and open to the public. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of March 12th through 18th, 2023, in the City of Stillwater as Sunshine Week.
One correction. Last week was Sunshine Week.
It was.
Because James Madison's birthday is on the 16th of March, and so we always use that week. Your schedule meant we either had to come before or after. So anyway, I am representing the Stillwater League of Women Voters, and we have other members with us today. Pat James, who's a former chair of Sunshine Week, Deanna Homer, who is, yes, another former chair of Sunshine Week, and Gladine Allred, who has been active in this group quite a bit. The League of Women Voters, you may know from our voter registrations, from our candidate forums, and we hope you know us from Vote 411, which is a nonpartisan information website, which you can get information about candidate selections, voting, whatever, voting places, registration to vote. So thank you for having us.
Thank you for the work that you do. We all also have these individual pledges around Sunshine Week.
Yes.
In terms of our pledge, not only to comply with the letter, but also the spirit of Oklahoma's open meeting and open records laws.
Yep.
And we appreciate the work that the League does in that regard. Melissa collected mine.
I'd like to have the members who are here. Can we all get in?
Please.
Alright.
You're not in the picture.
You're supposed to be here.
Mom, do you have any tabs signed? Are there more signs?
Where's the sign?
Right there.
Oh, there are a bunch of signs.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch.
That's okay, one side.
Hold on. Here. There you go.
You have signs.
The signs are great.
There's one underneath.
There you go.
Ready?
Right, but this easement's not currently being used for anything. So, yeah, I mean, if our client had property on the other side of town and you needed something from them, you could hold them hostage on this as well.
Do they have property on this side of town?
Not that we're dealing with at this time.
Understood.
So while we understand staff desire to get the other situation taken care of with this, I mean, we acknowledge that. We're going to continue that discussion. We're going to have the meeting at 1:00 on Thursday. So, but in my mind, the two don't equate to each other. It's an unused easement.
Understood. Counselors, any further questions? Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Jaclyn, so staff's recommendation is to postpone this item. Can you just explain a little bit more about why staff feels like it's necessary to postpone?
Yes, staff recommends to table the item to date certain of April 17th. Tabling will allow staff and the property owner time to derive a written agreement to attain the appropriate documents for easements and/or right-of-way dedicated to us.
And does the city think it needs that leverage to get those easements?
It has been a thought that, yes, we would need it, but if they are in compliant and are, since we have, we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, we are hopeful that it would make progress.
Do you need that much time till April?
Not necessar-- it depends on how, because we would like to have a written something. It may not necessarily need to wait till April 17th. It could go to the 4th. It would, we just figured that 30 days was a good buffer to allow legal and everybody to have documentations in place.
I think, to me, it seems like it's a process that we should, I mean, right, there's opportu-- there's times where maybe we expedite that, but it doesn't sound to me as though there's something really pushing that, a need for the process to be kind of circumvented. I just, it seems like that should be an exception, kind of an extraordinary exception, that we should stick to the process that you all need to kind of be fair and transparent about how we go through things.
Mary, if I may just add a couple of comments. I was briefed on this by the staff attorney in my office that was working on this, and please correct me if I misstate anything because I've just been briefed on it, but it's my understanding that the partial closure of the access easement that is on the agenda tonight is actually adjacent to the area where the city utilizes, right, drive for access to the airport. So, we are talking about a bigger picture, kind of some complex issues that do need to be resolved. But what we're looking at tonight is a closure. The city process for the, where the city council has the authority to close it by ordinance. We retain the right to reopen it. It's my understanding that applicant's next step would be to file a vacation action in district court, at which time, we absolutely could file an objection if we had a valid reason to object. So, we do kind of have that fallback provision. But again, as far as the actual item that's on the agenda tonight, it was my understanding from staff and my staff attorney that the city's not using the access easement and that the public is also not using the access easement. So, I offer that for your information.
I guess my concern is if there's a development happening here that requires vacation of the public access easement, will that also potentially cause a problem with the city's access, where the city is currently using access, where we need to gain an easement? And if it continues to go forward, will that make it harder or make it potentially impossible for the city at some point to get an easement where we need the easement, where the road to the airport is currently being used? I mean, I don't, I mean, to me, it's, they are part of, they're part of the same overall development that's happening there. And at some level, solving them at the same time makes some sense, although I don't think the city doesn't have necessarily a right to gain an easement, right? We'd have to, I assume we're negotiating a purchase and easement on the--
Yeah, some sort of agreement with them. I'm not sure what direction we are going to go yet. Staff's going to meet and discuss more on how much the airport actually uses it, et cetera, and, you know, the actual need for this, and do some more research on types of agreements that can establish for this access, because we are maintaining that asphalt fault road before it forks to gravel. There, so--
But that asphalt road is currently on the applicant's property, correct? And we don't currently have an easement to be using that road. So, the applicant could put a fence up and keep us from using that road right now.
Correct.
I mean, I would feel better if we were solving all these problems together, but I also understand that one is not necessarily related to the other and that we still have other opportunities moving forward.
There is a meeting scheduled, I believe on Thursday, between city staff, the applicant, and my office. So, if you do feel you need more information before you can make a decision, you certainly can table the item to the next meeting.
Just to be clear, if we were to move forward with the decision now, what is the motion or the action would be to approve the closure?
Partial closure.
And then there would be an ordinance that would be brought at the next meeting, which we'd have to do two readings of. And then after that, the applicant could apply to vacate--
That's correct.
--through the district court. So, there's a long way to go in this process, even if--
Yes.
So, even if we proceed with what's in front of us and move forward today, we could still not act on the ordinance. Yeah.
Not necessarily. When you take action tonight, I believe the language in the code is it shall be confirmed by ordinance. So, the ordinance is it, I don't know that we've ever had that happen, but typically, if you approve the closing, the closure is confirmed by the ordinance. I would have to look into that further. I don't know why we wouldn't because the ordinance still gives us the right to, if we needed to reopen it at any time, we could do that as well.
So, to me, it sounds like if we, if we take a step forward tonight, allows the applicant to continue what they're trying to get done, we still have the opportunity, if we need to, to come back and get everything else solved. But at least it keeps the issue moving forward without us necessarily sacrificing the needs that we might, we might have in the future. I don't, I don't love this in any stretch, but it certainly, it seems reasonable to let this move forward or at least continue on the path it's on.
Jaclyn, have you all had the conversations with airport staff to, or is that something that is happening in the next--
I had a brief conversation with Gary today, saying that they do use it. They do not project any future developments to the north. It is kind of a storage area that they kind of bypassed through, but he was going to do some more research to make sure and be prepared for our meeting.
So, we don't, at this point, know that even if we didn't, if we had no access to that at all, I mean, I assume we could just go inside the fence? I mean, there's other options here, right? That's not some necessity that we have an easement here?
Well--
We just don't know that, one way or the other.
Okay, hang on, let me--
Okay.
I'm going to pull up this other image so you can kind of get a, that is not the folder I want. Got to make this bigger. Am I missing city council? There it is.
Candy Staring, Engineering Department, here to represent engineering, or for some questions I can answer and to help Jackie with what's going on. I learned about this this afternoon. So, there, there's a possibility that if they do put the gate up, we're at a more disadvantage. Somebody earlier said maybe bargaining chips on, you know, if we still have the easement, then we have the ability to get the other easement we need. But we are trespassing on their property, and so it's, it's not good for us in that way. I think this used to be part of an industrial part of the airport area that we owned, and when we exchanged the land, somehow, there was the miss because we, we don't have easements on our own property. So, whenever we sold the property, we didn't give ourselves the easement that we needed for the access. So, that's what we're missing. There's probably likely a way to access it, and if there's not, I think that we could work that out with the owner of the property on how we can take an easement that more abuts the property line. I think some of this is on a trust basis. Like, we don't have the ability right now to get it in writing, but they have, we have them on public record at least, with Stephen Goz saying that we, we'll work it out and we'll, we'll find a way to make this right, make it work. There, with our easement right now, we could go all the way to the northeast and still have to have another easement on that other person's property to come around to our property, which isn't feasible. There's a lot of things not feasible right here. Going all the way around the runways to get to it is not what we're going to do. So, we could come up on the inside of our property line right there, very likely to still be able to access. It wouldn't be asphalt off, obviously, right away, but we could still get to it if we needed to. I mean, we could make it work. If you all choose tonight to allow the vacation, we could make it work.
Okay, yeah, so that was going to be my question. I mean, do you feel, do you feel like it's a tremendous problem if we go ahead and move forward?
I do not think that it is a tremendous problem, no.
Counselors, further questions? Thank you both. I closed the public hearing already, right?
Yes, you did.
Counselors, action on the item.
So, since I can approve staff recommendation, do I just move that we close the requested utility easement?
I think you would just move approval of the request.
Yes.
All right, I move approval of the request.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for the closing. Any further discussion? Please vote.
It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Jaclyn. Item eight, general orders. Eight A is approve a budget amendment appropriating $93,000 from the transportation sales tax fund for public improvements for the convention center hotel development project and authorize the city manager to execute a task order under the existing master services agreement with Goz and Associates not to exceed a fee of $80,850 for design and construction phase services. Mr. Millis?
Good evening. Bill Millis with the Engineering Department, here to ask you to authorize a task order under the existing MSA with Goz and Associates for the design of improvements near the proposed hotel and convention center. This is related to the redevelopment agreement approved by the CETA in late 2021. The, here is shown the map of the area. The red hatching is the site of, the development site of the hotel convention center and parking garage. On the, on the east or on the, on the right is Duck. And then west, to the west in Knoblock, on the bottom is Maple Avenue and between Maple and Elm. The, so the improvements that we're talking about with this item, excuse me, are reconstruction of West Street from Elm to Maple and reconstruction of Maple from Knoblock to Duck, also including drainage improvements at West and Elm and potentially extending south along West, harder all the way down to, south towards Maple. Should also include waterline replacement on West Street and sewer line replacement along the entire length of West, as well as partially along Maple. There are also, and then in the arena of public improvements, electric improvements to be made, but that's separate from this item. So, this item does not address the electric. And you can see all of these items are part of investing in the, in the economic growth in this part of town in concert with the development of Hotel Convention Center. This slide shows our strategic priorities that are addressed by this item, as well as the photo there is, that's Maple. On this slide, I'm talking about the budget. The request is for $93,000 in expenditures, which includes contingency. There are sufficient funds available in the transportation sales tax fund, and this is for design only, design and associated expenses. We will come back later with construct, with a request for construction expenditures.
I thought that $93,000 was pretty low for construction of that, that street.
And just the bottom of the slide is to remind the, maybe the viewers at home about the, that this item would be at least partly funded by the additional funds generated by the time proposition. And this, this photo on the, on the right is West Street. And I would be glad to try to answer any questions before going to the recommendation.
Counselors? Are the West Street improvements including widening, or is it just going to be reconstructing the space that's there?
Reconstruct it in place. The, the right-of-way there is pretty narrow, and it does look more like an alley than a street--
It does.
--but it's a public street, and it is one-way, northbound.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that while I, I know we have no shortage of road projects that need doing, I think, using our transportation tax, and especially as we increased it last year, using it in some high-visibility projects is, is a good way to use that, so people can see kind of the results of increasing that sales tax.
Yes, thank you. And, yeah, I agree. You can tell from the photos that, that this is money well-spent at this location.
Yes.
Do you know where these roads are on the sort of pavement management program list?
No, sir, I don't.
Don't know. I mean, they're on it somewhere.
They are, they are.
Because they definitely need reconstruction. I, I agree. I mean, I think that the, especially in conjunction with, with a project like this, which will be a sales tax generator, a hotel tax generator, that, that investing these transportation dollars to make sure that these projects are successful is, is an investment in increasing, continuing to increase our, our tax revenues in general. So, certainly makes sense to me.
What's, is it the intent to improve these roads before or after the construction, when it may tear the roads back up again?
Well, the intent would be to protect the roads, but how we stage the timing and not, we'll work that out with a developer to figure out the best way to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? If, no further questions, Bill, what's the recommendation?
Staff recommends a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a task order under the existing master services agreement with Goz and Associates for not to exceed fee of $80,885, approve expenditures of $93,000 for design services, potholing permits, and contingency, and approve a budget amendment appropriating $93,000 from the transportation sales tax fund.
Counselors?
Motion to approve staff recommendations.
Second?
With a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That is approved with a vote of five to zero. Item eight B is to approve budget amendments appropriating $80,000 for design bid, phase support, and construction services for the Block 34 area. And Candy Starex here.
Good evening again. Talking to you all this evening about Block 34. We hired Goz and Associates. Stephen and Katie are both here this evening to look at alternatives for the perimeter blocks around the Block 34 and also on the north and south side of the community center. Really, we asked them to kind of give us three levels, maybe the like-it, love-it, got-to-have-it theme for the ice cream place. We've already committed to, we've already committed to the demo site utilities, parking, curb and gutter sidewalks, and some lighting inside the block as part of the interior, and that estimate at 30% design was 1.3 million. And then, our commitment to the perimeter was, is what we're talking about tonight. We've considered three options. The first one is here. On every option, there's a $1.3 million estimate for stormwater from Ninth Avenue down Duncan to 12th. And that number is just, think of that as an extra adder over here to the side that's not included in the totals that you see next to the option. So, this first one is the two blocks that you see in the bold dashed line around, and every option, the next ones keep adding another two blocks. So, this is, the next option, we were at about 2.2 before, now we're at 4.1 million. So, you can see a trend for a million dollars a block. This is including the reconstruction of the utilities beneath the road, water sewer. And then finally, the other option was most all of the access roads to get to the block from Duck, and this includes all the parking and, again, all the utilities to be reconstructed. So, looking at this in a summary format, when we take the area improvements that I went through just now, option one, two, and three, plus the drainage at 1.3, plus our promise to the interior of the block that, again, was at 30% design, 1.3, these add up to 4.8, 8.6 million, which are a little bit jaw-dropping, especially with our budget. So, the first thing we did was take out drainage and say, water's going to get there, might not get there as well, but it's going to get down there, and we can postpone that project until later. And we got new numbers ranging between 3.5 and 7.3. And although we would love to be able to do more than we can do, that we, we think right now our, the affordability in our budgets, we're recommending the 3.5 million dollar option where we replace Eighth Street between Husband and Duncan and Duncan between Eighth and Ninth. This is a, on Duncan Street, we're going to redo all that parking, that some of it is pretty bad, that's on the east side of the community center, and we're going to have retractable bollards where we can isolate that road for street fairs and farmers markets and things real easily by raising these up and keeping traffic out, and that's where the trucks will pull in. So-- Come back down to my slides. This are strategic priorities, our effective services and accountable government, and places and mobility. The budget for this, at this point, to continue with the design by Goz is $80,000, and you all authorized $100,000 last time, so this brings our total to $180,000. And we would return to you after we have bids for the project, so we can ask for construction funding. This is also a time project that was part of the initiative of the, for the transportation sales tax, time being together investing in municipal excellence. And there's a website there people can go to, to read more about that. Any questions?
Counselors?
So, there's a project working on drainage down by the library.
12th and Duncan area, yes.
So, how does this, not doing this drainage here tie in with that project that's going right now?
How, you're asking how will it work out when we don't tie this area into that?
Correct.
There would have been an improvement if we were able to spend that 1.3 million on stormwater. There would be an improvement. We are, in lieu of being able to do that, we're going to take the intersection of Ninth and Duncan, and when we replace it as part of this option, we're going to correct the grades a little bit so that it's not a kind of a, you know, when you go across a street and the crown is on the perpendicular street, so you kind of go down and then down. So, we're going to correct that a little bit so the flow is better. So, we'll have some improvement, but we, it will not be, even having the stormwater, 1.3 million, would still not have been a magic bullet because we can't even size, and Stephen might help me here. We can't size the conduits that we need on the way down. They're quite big enough. We'll probably have to start paralleling conduits to make them, to make it even bigger.
Hi, Katie Purdy with Goz and Associates, 113 East Eighth Ave. The junction box at Duncan and 12th is actually only sized for like the 25-year storm event. So, even if we were to tie in our, our pipe to this, which we've, like, very roughly preliminary designed, we couldn't get any bigger than that just due to what that box is currently being built. But that box was built with curb inlets or curb hoods to catch the flow coming down the street currently. And that's before Block 34 was developed.
Well, I know with the heavy rain, you can almost kayak down that street.
Did that answer?
Unfortunately, yes.
Sort of, yes, okay. Other questions?
So, what is the, if we don't do the stormwater on that road right now, but we do reconstruct the road, are we going to have to tear that street back up if we came up with the money to do the stormwater?
Yes. If we decided to drain from, like, where the blue dashed line is, we would be making, we would be coming through that intersection, and we would, at a minimum, have to do a trench through there and patching that never looks, you know, once you've done it, when you have to patch it, it never looks the same again. But that's what would be required to get over there.
It seems short-sighted to reconstruct all of Duncan Street for $2 million and not put stormwater line in it when we do it. I don't, I don't understand why we would do that.
It wouldn't be, so, we would have drained into curb inlets at the intersection of Duncan and Ninth and not started our actual conduit until that intersection. So, I, I think you're saying, why would we go all the way back up Duncan with storm drain? We would only, where the dark blue line is in that area, that's where we would have to go through just that intersection, that south part.
Can, can we not put something in there now that even if it doesn't, can, I mean, I just would, if we're going to spend the money to redo this street and that intersection, I don't want to have to go back and tear it up in who knows when, but--
We can, we can, yes.
I mean, I would at least want us to go through and do whatever we can to make sure that we can add the stormwater piece at a later, later date without--
Without patching, without going back in there.
I mean, I don't know what, what goes under there if we do the project.
So, we would have to plug, because if you think about storm drains around a curb, they would all have to not let water into the system, or else it's just holding it. So, you'd have to have a way--
Because the 1.3 million would be for the pipe to run from Duncan and Ninth down to 12th and Duncan?
Eight.
Where is it running from Eighth? Through the park?
It would run from Eighth all the way straight down Duncan.
So, this little drawing right here, it really goes all the way up here?
I, so my estimate, the 1.3 was from, can you, can you see my cursor? Oh, no.
No.
My estimate was to put intersection, so I would put curb inlets and storm pipe at the north side of all the intersections. So, there'd be curb inlets and storm pipe from Eighth Avenue and Duncan all the way down, and so there'd be more inlets at Ninth and Duncan, again, at Tenth and Duncan, 11th and Duncan, and then tying in, sorry, tying into the current, currently being built junction box at 12th and Duncan. So, it's going all the way down, and it would, we would replace half a street on Duncan all the way down, or it'd be, yeah, it'd be six foot of pavement. We'd do half the street all the way down because with curb inlets, you go right behind the curb, and so we'd replace a half a section of street.
Does that 1.3 million cover this, that street repair then, or replacement along Duncan?
So, 1.3 was our estimate, yes, and that was replacing the pavement as well.
So, and that would, that would give you storm drain inlets at Eighth and Duncan, Ninth and Duncan, Tenth, 11th, and that would all tie into the 12th and Duncan junction?
Yes, sir.
But you're saying that the junction box that's being built is undersized?
Yes, due to existing conditions and where they tie in currently, there's just no way to carry the flow that's needed, especially with the drainage area that's in this, it's a large area, and so it's just, that's what city, the city designed that box, and that's what they found feasible. I'm not, I may have misspoken. It may be the 50-year event, but I know it's not sized to the standard 100-year event.
So, I'm going to ask a question that may not make sense. Is it possible to put in the pipe and block it off so that when you go back and eventually redo it, you don't have to tear up the street?
We can put in pipes and plug pipes. Storm drains are, somebody might have to help me that's better with storm, but those grates that are collecting the water at each intersection have routes. There you go.
Yeah, basically, yes. You could put in a storm pipe, say, under the intersection of Duncan, crossing Ninth, and you could plug the ends of the pipe. What you might have to do, either have to make a get, well, actually, you probably would not want to put in the curb, the grates and the curb hoods, because it'd be hard to keep them blocked off. So, you'd have to tear it up later to add those. But also, we'd have to make some estimates about the size of the pipe. There may be some challenges to getting it perfectly right, but you could, you could make a pretty good-- make a pretty good drainage design and size those pipes and bury them, and plug the ends, and then come back and tie to them later. It may, it may not work out perfectly, because you haven't designed the whole thing yet, but at least maybe, you wouldn't be starting from scratch later.
I'm just trying to think a way to do something now to avoid tearing up streets when you go back and do it, correct, I will say correctly.
It's usually against our better judgment to put in a part of a project that we just let sit there and age and deteriorate until we come back later and connect to it, it's money that's been sitting there unused. And we'd rather, or maybe, than we like to go use it and spend it. Will we be cutting into the intersections around here to put that in? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any opportunity, I mean, this isn't really probably our realm, because we're just looking at the fabric around this block, but is there any opportunity to consider low-impact development, or more natural stormwater solutions as opposed to pipe? That might be less expensive?
They do have some rain gardens, and that, I think all along this south side, maybe even more than that.
Can you hear me? Okay, so we're actually not proposing any increase in runoff. So, if you, there's some old aerials that I found that are from 2005, and this actually used to be more, more developed than it is now, so we're actually proposing, you know, this is a lot of grassed area and trees, so it's gonna soak up and help. So, there are a couple proposed rain gardens down along 9th Avenue that will catch some of the flow, but we do think the storm inlets overall, I mean, I don't know if you've drove down Duncan or 9th when it's raining, but again, yeah, you can kayak down it, and you can't walk across the streets, they're flooded, and on the aerial that I went at, at 2005, this parking spot in Duncan across from the community center, there's actually dirt sitting there, and if you go out there today, it looks like that exact same dirt is sitting there, and that exact same parking lot spot hasn't been used since, because it's just full of sediment, and the grading is so bad. It was Goz and Associates' recommendation that with whatever option the city chose to, if the money is available to put in the storm, it would help, and beyond, be able to tie in upstream at some point, the city will have to put in storm downtown.
Yeah.
And just on the rain garden piece, when it's done right, there's usually a storm system to tie into down low, cause those have a deeper cross-section of soil and rock and everything, so the water can infiltrate and go, and they really only handle like, the five-year event. So, these big 10, 15, 25, 100-year events, they just, they, the rain gardens and things are designed to bypass those big flows, just cause they can't pull it all in, so it's really for those two and five-year events. Which is when the sediment and the dirty water is really on the streets, and that's what they're intended to do, is try to help clean that up, so.
I really like this group presentation thing. So, I'll just say one more quick thing, there's also some patches on Husband and 9th, so we're not ignoring those streets, or some areas there that we'll be doing full-depth repair.
Well, I have a very difficult time approving rebuilding Duncan Street without putting stormwater line under it. Like, I just, I don't understand why we would spend $2 million on that project without doing what needs to be done downtown long-term. I mean, that, regardless of whether we're doing Block 34 or not, that stormwater, the stormwater downtown is a problem in any event, and I don't, I don't know where that money comes from, but I'd almost rather do just Duncan Street and, and the stormwater piece, because I just, I mean, it is painful to me to think of redoing the surface of Duncan Street without, without providing for the stormwater flow, that, I mean, that's a huge problem there, no matter what. Where is, I mean, how are we anticipating funding this 2.2 for the street in the first place?
260 transportation sales, penny sales tax.
Would the stormwater piece come out of that same? We don't have another bucket of money for stormwater projects.
It'd come out of the same. So, if, when staff looks at things like this, and we do, we would love to have everything that we know we need, but we get into budget situations when we know how much available we have in the fund, how much will be assigned for future things, like Sixth Avenue easements and all that comes along with that road project, and other things that pop up that we don't have control of, and, you know, $2 million comes out for hotel event, and $3.5 comes out for this, and by the time you look at the forecast, there's nothing left. And so, when we make recommendations, we're considering that, is there a way to postpone some of that other stuff? Is there a way to look a little bit closer and see if we can delay some other things so that we have the money? Yeah, we can do that.
I think it's so challenging when we have private investors and people in the community investing, you know, double that in this redevelopment of this block, and kind of our responsibility to build the infrastructure, help with the infrastructure around it, and knowing that it has, right, these layers of need from the streets down to the infrastructure underneath those roads.
Yeah. So, looking at, Mayor, what you just mentioned about starting on just doing Duncan only and the stormwater, the consequences, or the negative side of that, is that we now have 8th Street that's in pretty poor repair, and when we are ready to replace it, then we're closing that block, and we don't have the parking, we have the safety problems with this really fabulous park that has a construction site right next to it, so...
I mean, that's gonna be the case on Husband and 9th at some point, too.
It would be, yes, anytime we're doing any of that, if, 9th Avenue is in really pretty great shape. But yeah, and I'm not saying, your idea is a great one, we can abandon 8th and go and start at 8th and Duncan and go south and do the stormwater.
Was the ask from Block 34 folks to do, the ask, well, as much as we could, right?
They didn't, yeah, they didn't.
That's probably what their ask was. Yeah.
And another thing to consider while we're looking at our pocketbook, is, you know, what we've committed to on the interior of the block may not, by the time we get to bids, it may not be that 1.3, and we might be coming back to make decisions about what can we really do on the inside because of the money.
You think it'll be cheaper?
Quick conversation with Kristy Kluck indicates that if we dedicated another $1.3 million to this project, we'd be pretty close to zero by July in transportation. Another $9 million next year that would be collected through the year.
Okay, so, what you were asking for tonight is a design contract to continue design on 8th and Duncan, correct?
Yes.
Which wouldn't include doing any design around the stormwater piece?
Right. The recommendation at this point is to walk away from stormwater for now, and maybe sometime day in the future, solve it, and do these two blocks and the utilities that lie beneath.
What are the ramifications for doing design for a wider scope? Or not doing design for a wider scope?
More tag team.
Yeah, I mean, on this, the storm, I mean, we could definitely plan for it, and we're gonna make assumptions about development densities anyways, of everything being fully developed, to look at the runoff. So, as far as designing the storm for that piece now, I don't know that long-term, we'd have to really go back and do anything. The most that could happen is, you say a big building gets built next to it, and they wanna tie their roof drains into the storm. We could provide a design with some stub outs, but if it doesn't get constructed, those things can be added, you know, as projects come online.
So, it wouldn't necessarily change your design of 8th and Duncan to not include the storm now?
No, cause a lot of those inlets were gonna be bypass inlets anyways, we weren't gonna put a sag in the road to collect the water. We're gonna allow the water to flow over the grates, and so you collect a portion of the water, but not all of the water draining in the street, so.
Stephen, if you designed this as it is without the stormwater addition, I mean, how much can you help with just the street itself to improve?
Well, we're gonna take it and put a crown in it, so we'll get, keep the water in the gutters. Right now, it kinda spread out everywhere, and goes this way and that way, there's a lot of cracks in it, so it's gonna pond right now, and things like that. So, it's gonna be a new street section, the water will flow better, but the same volume of water will still be going down Duncan.
Will it get across 9th better?
That's, yeah. And we still have a couple of ponding areas in 9th, like Candy said, and deal with that through the patching and full-depth repair, cause 9th has been overlaid, you know, in the not-too-distant paths. And we're pretty sure it's brick underneath it, so you start getting into that, it's a whole nother ball of wax, so.
Counselors, any further questions? Candy, what's your recommendation for us?
Staff's recommendation is a motion to authorize a general manager to execute a task order amendment under the existing master services agreement with Goz and Associates for a not-to-exceed fee of $105,919.55, and approve a budget amendment appropriating an additional $80,000, bringing the total to 180,000 to cover the alternative space, engineering plans, bid phase support, construction administration, and contingency.
Counselors?
Is the math an issue there?
You mean the $80,000 plus $105,000?
Yeah.
And for a total of 180?
So, we initially had a $100,000 estimate that covered more than we needed, we requested, I think about 30 in what we called a design continuation. So, we have some authorization left on the first 80? If that's what you're...
Well, I think what we're saying is, 180 total is what you're saying, but what we're seeing is 80,000 plus 105,000.
Right, so 80,000, so you can think of it as, that 80,000 already covers some of that 105,000. So, if you, if you think about the 80 that we asked for, the, actually, the initial 100,000 already covered it. So, this is, the 180, the 105,919 is the additional on top of the existing amendment we have, and I think it was 35 or 45, 50, 50 or 60? I think it was, I think it was about 60, the initial work they did. So, when we add that 60 to that 106, you get about 166, and that extra is the contingency that we take up to 180,000.
So, it's a task order amendment, so it's taking an existing task order and amending the amount of the task order. So, your total of the task order is that 105?
Is 105,900, that's the amount of money that is authorized to pay. The total payment on the task order, the 180 is the budget for the project overall, so the budget line is 180. The 105 number is related to the actual payments being made.
Got it.
So, the budget amendment itself shows 180 total being...
That's right.
Yep. Okay.
It is a little confusing, cause we did this a little bit different, we asked for some upfront authorization to keep going, and, so that's what, why it looks weird.
Counselors, action on the recommendation? Not a lot of excitement about this item. I move to approve staff recommendation. We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation, please vote. Passes 5 to 0. Item 8C is approve a budget amendment and mid-year adjustments to the budget. Kristy Kluck?
Good evening, Kristy Kluck, Finance Director, and I'm here this evening to present mid-year budget amendments. The city staff continually monitors our revenues and expenditures throughout the year, and that's important to be able to inform you, the council, and also our city manager on our, any actions that need to be taken to meet budget projections or possibly modify the budget. In staff's analysis of the fiscal year '23 revenues and expenditures, we have identified some amendments that are needed. So, passage of these amendments will allow the city to meet its obligations with respect to our health insurance claims, and it will also aid in the presentation of a balanced fiscal year '24 budget, which you will get to see next week. Okay, so I'll start with revenues. On the revenue side, staff is proposing an increase of $2 million in sales tax, and this is just due to increased collections. Of our sales tax, remember that one cent is dedicated to the SUA, and now one cent is also dedicated to transportation projects, and so for that reason, a transfer out of $500,000 to the SUA, and a transfer out of $500,000 to the Transportation Sales Tax Fund is also being proposed this evening. Staff is also recommending an increase of $800,000 in use tax revenues, as well as an increase of $482,674 in health insurance reimbursements, and these are due to reimbursements received under our reinsurance policy. So, anytime a health insurance claim for an individual exceeds $150,000 in any given fiscal year, our reinsurance policy kicks in, and the city is reimbursed for the amounts in excess of 150,000. Proposed expenditure increases include an increase of $2 million in health insurance, and this is due to inactivity this year. This is being funded by the reinsurance proceeds that I just mentioned, as well as transfers from the general fund and the SUA into the self-insurance fund. Attached to the council report is a table summarizing the proposed amendments, so hopefully that will help kind of build a roadmap for you, especially with regards to the intra-fund activity. And then I also wanted to mention that on the SUA agenda later this evening, I will be proposing some budget amendments as well, and those are all included in that same council report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Kristy. Counselors?
All right.
No questions? Is there, well, do you have a recommendation, or do you need to read?
Yeah, I have a motion. So, the motion is to approve budget amendments as summarized in the financial impact and funding source sections of the council report.
Counselors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second?
If a motion and a second, please vote. Those items are approved 5 to 0. Item 9, Resolution 2023-5, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council approving the bylaws of the Stillwater Public Library Board. Stacy Delano's here.
Good evening, I'm Stacy Delano, Director of the Stillwater Public Library, and you have before you a resolution requesting that you approve and adopt the bylaws of the Stillwater Public Library Board. Over the last several months, several members of the board formed a bylaws committee and reviewed the city charter, the Oklahoma Department of Libraries' model trustee bylaws, and examples from boards across the state to create its own bylaws. While the city charter does in fact, cover quite a bit on how much, on how the board is meant to operate, some provisions are not included. These bylaws address those issues, and it provides guidance to the board on several important matters, such as conflicts of interest, midterm succession of a chair who's left, and public comment at board meetings. Memorializing these proceedings... these procedures will result in more efficient and uniform administration of the board from year to year. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Stacy. Counselors?
I'm a new person, so there were no bylaws before?
There weren't. They're, I have them for all my other boards, but, but not the library board, no.
Thank you.
And these were approved by the library board. There's a blank line on what we have here.
Yes, at the February 28th meeting, those were approved.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Counselors, is there action on the resolution?
Move to approve Resolution CC 2023-5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Resolution is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Congratulations on your new bylaws. Item 10 is ordinances. On second read, we have an ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 3520, an ordinance closing a portion of a utility easement located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 22, Township 19 North, range two east of the Indian Basin Meridian, City of Stillwater, Pena County, Oklahoma, near property address is 1210 West 12th Avenue. Counselors?
Motion to adopt ordinance 3520.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3520 is adopted. On ordinance 3521, I think we have a request from staff?
Yes, the Center for Economic Development Law, serving as Special Counsel on Economic Development Matters, has requested some additional time to propose some changes to this version of the ordinance. As such, I'm requesting that this item be tabled to a date certain, and it could be tabled to March 27th or April 3rd at the pleasure of the council.
Counselors?
What else is on the March 27th agenda? I'm not going to be here for either one of these meetings, but what else was on that study session agenda?
I believe budget and a presentation from Johnson and Controls Industries on the agenda planner.
Okay, then I move we postpone this item until March 27th.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to table the ordinance 3521, second reading to March 27th. Please vote. That tabling is approved with a vote of five to zero. Reports from officers and boards. Ms. Carmeling?
Nothing to report.
Mr. McNigle?
Yes, sir, thank you. Stillwater Animal Welfare operates at maximum capacity every day with only 26 total dog kennels. However, with more than 40 dogs currently, they're at a critically high capacity level and are requesting adoption efforts from the public. Our animal welfare has operated as an no-kill shelter and serves as trusted resource for multiple jurisdictions, including New York County. Recently, there's been an increase of surrenders and a low adoption rate. Our officers are asking the community to consider adoption and prevent the euthanasia of healthy animals due to a lack of space. There are several upcoming adoption events, March 26th from 1:00 to 3:00, at Renaissance of Stillwater on McElroy Road, March 28th from 2:00 to 5:00, a dog adoption at Blue Peak on Main Street, and on April 30th from 9:00 to 3:00, low-cost vaccine clinic for the public at 707 East 8th. For more information, go to stillwater.org and follow the Stillwater Animal Welfare on Facebook.
Thank you, Norman. Vice Mayor?
Another great community cleanup event is going on this Saturday. You're invited to join the OSU Department of Wellness and the OSU Office of Sustainability for a park cleanup at Cameoka Trail from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Volunteers are asked to meet at 308 Franklin Lane, behind the Virtual Academy and Stillwater High School North to Boomer Lake. It's a great opportunity for some cleanup as people are getting their bikes out and their walking shoes out to enjoy, hopefully, some warmer weather soon.
Hopefully some less wind.
Less wind would be good, too.
Counselor Hawkins?
A quick update on ODOT projects, everyone's favorite. Perkins Road and US 177, ODOT has remained on schedule throughout this project, and their flexibility to work with us during large events has been greatly appreciated. We also appreciate our businesses located in the construction area and their patience, as well as our patrons who continue to support these businesses. This project is set to be completed in August. Fabulous news. Sixth Street and Highway 51, residents and visitors will have a break from major highway construction through town after Perkins Road is complete because bidding for the Highway 51 project will not begin until fiscal year 2026-27. After the bidding process, then construction will proceed. So fabulous that before school starts next fall, the project on Perkins Road will be complete.
Excellent. Excuse me. Counselor Clark?
The city is accepting applications for citizen representatives to serve on various committees, including Board of Adjustment and Board of Drainage Appeals. These committees are essential for increased development and infrastructure projects within our community. If you'd like to get involved in your local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider serving on one or more of these committees. For more information and to apply online, go to stillwater.org/citizenboards.
Thank you very much. Counselor Harden?
Just a reminder, this Saturday is the annual trash-off event to help keep Stillwater beautiful and healthy. It'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Volunteers will meet at Couch Park Pavilion at 1270 East Alcott Drive. Since they're being provided work gloves, safety vests, and trash bags, volunteers are asked to RSVP before the end of day tomorrow, which is Tuesday, March 21st, by calling 405-533-8482. This is an opportunity to earn community service hours if needed. Additional information available online at stillwater.org/trash-off.
Excellent.
We've discussed whether it's a dash or a hyphen.
I will give you a quick update on some of our other transportation projects in town. After several unforeseen delays, the Husband Street and Third Street Bridges are now on schedule. Husband Street is expected to be complete in August, and the Third Street Bridge should be complete in November. Design is about 90% complete on the Airport Industrial Road projects. We can't close that project until environmental process for land conversion is complete for Sanborn Park. It's a long process through the Land and Water Conservation Fund that we're about halfway through. So hopefully those, those projects will be complete soon. All right. At this time, I would take a motion to recess the Stillwater City Council.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess City Council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be in recess. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for March 20th, 2023. Is there action on the consent docket?
Move to approve consent.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, consent docket's approved. Under general orders, we have Kristy Cluck here to talk to us about the budget amendments.
As promised, I'm back, talking about budget amendments. So on the SUA agenda, passage of these budget amendments will allow the SUA to meet its obligations with respect to bank charges, as well as aid in the preparation and presentation of a balanced fiscal year '24 budget. So on the revenue side, staff is proposing an increase of $600,000 in electric sales revenue, and that's due to the 3% CPI escalator that was effective January 1st, and also an increase of $500,000 in transfer, transfers from the city, the city's general fund for that increase in sales tax. On the expenditure side, staff is proposing an increase of $200,000 in bank charges, and these are for credit card acceptance fees. And this is a result of both an increase in the number of transactions, as well as the dollar amount of the transactions that are being realized on our utility bills. Also, sorry, go ahead. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Also, staff is recommending an increase of $562,000 in transfers out to the city's self-insurance fund, and that is to cover the SUA employee's share of increases in health insurance claims. All right, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Kristy. Trustees, any questions? What's your recommendation for us?
Motion to approve budget amendments as summarized in the financial impact and funding source sections of the trustee report.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Those budget amendments are approved five to zero. Item B is to approve budget amendments reflecting an increase in the OWRB loan proceeds. Kristy?
Okay. So in January 2023, the city council and SUA trustees passed resolutions to accept the Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan to fund the South Sewer Interceptor project. So the loan closed on January 10th with the following terms: a principal amount of $10.5 million, loan forgiveness up to $1 million, loan maturity after 30 years, and an interest rate of 2.93%. The last remaining action item for the trustees is to approve budget amendments for the loan activity, and so that activity includes the proceeds of $10.5 million, loan closing costs of $54,000, and then finally, project costs of $10,446,000. Are there any questions on that?
Trustees? What's your recommendation?
A motion to approve budget amendments to increase loan proceeds by $10.5 million and project expenditures by $10.5 million.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Those budget amendment is approved five to zero. Item C is approve budget amendments reflecting $210,000 increase for purchase of water treatment plant chemicals. Mr. Driscoll?
Good evening, trustees. James Driscoll, Water Utilities Director, and I am here for budget amendment for water treatment chemicals. So on June 13th, 2022, staff recommended awarding of chemical bids for fiscal year '23 and discussed cost projections well above the adopted fiscal year '23 budget for chemicals. Due to the large increase in chemical costs for fiscal '23, the water treatment plant chemical account does not contain adequate funding for the remainder of the fiscal year. This slide shows those cost increases that I showed you back in '22. With the percentage of change on the right, it shows fiscal year '21, '22, and '23, actual unit costs. And as you can see, some of them were as high as 154% increases. There was an 82, some 40s. Luckily, the higher ones are in chemicals that we don't use as much of. So the increase in chemical costs is part of it. We've also treated a little bit more water this year, and this slide kind of shows that. 2020 and '21 and '22, July through December totals for each, and millions of gallons treated. So our proposed solution is a budget amendment has been prepared, allocating an additional $210,000 for the purchase of chemicals needed for the water, uh, treatment of water at the plant. And budget sufficient funds are in the water fund. That being said, while there are funds available, it does take away from other projects either going or proposed, and there is a lot of need. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Trustees? What's your recommendation for us, James?
Staff recommends a motion to approve the budget amendment allocating $210,000 from the water fund for the purchase of chemicals for the water treatment plant.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. It's approved five to zero. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Any reports from the officers of the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for March 20th, 2023. Trustees, is there action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. It's approved five to zero. Under general orders, we have considered requests from HK Development for an additional $1.7 million in development financing assistance for the project located at 416 West Maple. Mr. Moore?
Yes, good evening, trustees. Brady Moore, on behalf of the city manager's office. Tonight, the item before you is considering a request from HK Development for an additional $1.7 million in development financing assistance for the Hotel Convention Center project located at 416 West Maple Avenue. The redevelopment, Mr. Kusuru and Gabby Trad of Partners in Hospitality are here this evening. Before I invite them up here to give you a quick update on their project, I just wanted to go over an overview, kind of, the history. On November 15th, 2021, CETA trustees reviewed and approved $6.2 million in upfront development financing assistance for the project with four yay votes. On November, or December 29th, 2022, HK Development and CETA executed redevelopment agreement, which detailed the total cost to construct the redevelopment not to be less than $28.3 million. Recently, the redevelopment informed city management that with inflation increases to material costs, the total cost to construct has increased to $35.7 million. The redevelopment is requesting an additional $1.7 million in development financing assistance to be paid to the project in arrears. The TIF III committee met on March 3rd, 2023, to review this request from HK Development and approve the $1.7 million in additional development financing to be paid in arrears with four yay and one abstention vote. I'll now invite Mr. Kusuru and Mr. Trad to come up to update you on the Hotel Convention Center project, and then I'll come back to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening. We're excited to share that we're moving along with the project. We're now in interior design phase. That's kind of put a smile, I think. We sent some pictures, maybe we can share with you? I think you've seen this. I don't know if you did. We redesigned the front, so now there's a bar and lounge with an exterior bar, interior bar, so this is, becomes better. We also redesigned interior design on the conference center. We have now like a pre-function space that wraps almost around each one, so it becomes more functional. And we did a small bonvoy lounge on top, on the corner, so people can also sit down on top floor. We did some interior rooms drawings. This is a regular king. In the lobby, this is a new design with a new check-in. Then we have a new bar. And we created a, like a media pods that people can do meetings, and there's a TV there, and they can plug into them. And there's now a nicer lounge that people can go just meet and have a drink as well. We're also almost done with bank financing, almost final steps, so we're excited. We're looking forward to present this later when we're almost done.
A couple financial notes. With the total construction cost now at $35.7 million, and the new total development assistance, if you approve it tonight, at $7.9 million, this will still fall right at that 22% significant impact for the, the level that's detailed in our implementation policy guide. Another note is the $1.7 million additional assistance is collected in arrears after the 6.2 note is retired in full.
So that the initial financing will be paid back out of the, out of the tax collections, and then this, from that point on, this $1.7 would be paid in arrears?
That's correct. And our projections show that, you know, with the life of the TIF going to 2043, that this is, this project seems to pay back within a year or two before that, so.
Trustees, any questions? And the whole 7.9 is in arrears, is that right?
No, there's been 6.2 that CETA has already approved in upfront funding.
Upfront, okay, thanks.
And then the, once that note has been paid back in full from the increments of the tax collected, then the 1.7 additional that you're approving tonight would be paid back to the redevelopers. So it's, it's no, I guess no risk is how you could say it, meaning that if it collects, if the project collects this during the life of the TIF, it will then get paid back to the developer based on performance that we all want to see.
Thanks, Brady.
Yep. And I have a motion.
Well, I'll just say before you make a recommended motion, I, pictures are fantastic. It looks like a wonderful property, and I can only imagine how often it will be used. I think just a tremendous addition to our community, and very, very excited to see it continue to move forward. So thank you for the work that you're doing. What's your recommendation, Brady?
I have a motion, direct staff to enter into a redevelopment agreement with HK Development and authorize a general manager and legal counsel to negotiate, finalize, and execute the terms of the redevelopment agreement for the Hotel and Convention Center at 416 West Maple Avenue.
Thank you, Brady. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Staff recommendation approved with a vote of five to zero. Any reports from the officers of the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sir, move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SITA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council. We are at item 14 on the agenda, which is an O-MAG training presented by Mr. Weatherford. My understanding is this be maybe an hour-ish long?
Probably a little less than that.
A little less than that? I think we will take a little recess. Do I have to vote on that?
We usually do.
Should have done that before I called it back to order.
Ten minutes?
I move we take a 10-minute recess.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess City Council. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
All right, we are back. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. Again, we're at item 14 on the agenda, which is participation in O-MAG recognition training. And I think Bill Tackett will go first from O-MAG as soon as he makes sure it's not his phone ringing.
Chickens are on their own by now. Apparently, my car warranty's out. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, and it's an honor to be before you, and it's really great to meet you. And so I'm Bill Tackett with O-MAG. O-MAG is your insurance provider. And in front of you, you have a historical document that we won't read. It's dated January 1979. We are your insurance provider, but we are not an insurance company. We're a Title 74 interlocal cooperative act agency. And Title 74 is the most powerful tool I think cities and towns have. It says whatever Stillwater can lawfully do by itself. You can find a partner and do it with them. Could be school, county, tribe, Carrollton, Texas, could be a whole group of people. June 1, 1977, Norm had worked here quite a while then. Choctaw and the Village decided that they would form O-MAG. And so from those two towns, Choctaw and the Village, we have 500 cities and towns that belong to us. And so we're created by cities and towns. We're owned by cities and towns. Like Stillwater, you all came on board 18 months after we got put into existence. And we're governed by a seven-member board of trustees that's selected from our membership. And so we've been around a long time. We're very stable and strong public entity risk pool. But you do get your general liability, your auto and your property coverage from us. And we're glad to have you guys, not only as a longtime member, but also as someone that is getting your coverage from us. This evening, our main presenter is David Weatherford. And what you'll hear tonight is nothing new. We don't know anything new. Everything's old or stolen or both. We won't be giving you any new information this evening. But our mission statement is to be the primary provider of insurance and risk management services to Oklahoma's cities and towns, and also help our cities and towns improve the quality of life of their citizens. And so that's not a new mission statement by any means, but that is what we seek. We think the best-run cities and towns have fewer claims, and the claims they have cost less money to resolve. And so we look around, and we don't have to pay dividends to investors. So we're able to reinvest money in loss control, for scholarships and grants. And we partnered with David Weatherford 12, 13 years ago. John Woods was one responsible for bringing David on board. And as we have increased our partnership with David, we looked around and said, we have a lot of programs for scholarships for mayors and city managers and clerks and finance officers. And we have training programs for public work, safety, and all these programs. But what do we have for the governing body, the elected officials, the people who make policy and who allocate resources? And in the state of Oklahoma, you're required, after you're elected or voluntold, you're going to be on the city council to go one time to municipal training. It's good training. We don't have any qualms about it. But we thought another supplementary approach would be to come on site and using David's content to bring the training to you. And so I will tell you that earlier in the week, I was doing this training in Weber's Falls. And Weber's Falls is more like what O-MAG is than Stillwater or Ponca or Bartlesville or Muskogee or Broken Arrow. But still, you all are a part of us. And so we have the same training for all of our members. And some of it's old information, but it's often to a new set of ears. And so David Weatherford is the person who's created this content. He's a strong partner with O-MAG. David's a graduate of Oklahoma State University. He's a graduate of the University of Tulsa Law School. And David began his career as a municipal attorney in 1988. He's a private practice attorney. He was city attorney for Cuida for about 27 years. He's currently the city attorney for Mounds in Manford, for Arcoma, and for Sand Springs, Oklahoma. And David was inducted into the Oklahoma Hall of Fame for city and town officials back a few years back. He's a thought leader, and we're very fortunate to be able to partner with him and for our partnership with Aubrey. Thank you for having us out, and I'll turn it over to David.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for having us. We're going to, as Bill mentioned, we do this training in a lot of different places. We've been to about 200 different cities, some larger than Stillwater, but most much smaller. I'm convinced the issues are the same for the elected officials because the decisions and the issues that you face are the same for everyone. We wanted to create a training program, and I wanted to create one for a very selfish reason years ago. I got very tired of working in cities that were not stable, in which there was inconsistency in management. There was inconsistency in decision-making, and it was a very difficult place to work. It made my job as a city attorney much harder, and it made the service of the elected officials much more difficult. So I became convinced that if we were to study those cities that were stable over a long period of time, and steal their good ideas, and studies those that fail consistently, and understand why they fail consistently, we could do better. And that really is the point of the training. It is not designed to be critical of any way you've ever done anything. It is to challenge you to do better. So the first thing we're going to do is take a test. And we're going to ask you to evaluate how you think you're doing. Again, it is not for the purpose of judging anyone. It's for the purpose of evaluating how we can do better. I like to use the comment that I've attended thousands of city council meetings. I think probably more than anyone in Oklahoma, and that's a sad way to live sometimes. The good thing about that is that it should challenge us to be good at what we do, and that your service should be enjoyable. Because if it is not, people like Norman McNichol will retire way too young and decide they want to do something else. And you want to retain good elected officials because they enjoy their service, and you want to retain good staff because they enjoy working here. As a city attorney, the worst thing I've ever heard from an elected official is, I don't think I want to do this anymore because I don't enjoy it. And when we get to that point, good people leave, and that builds instability. I'm not going to go through a lot of the history because we're going to leave you with a lot of materials to look at and think about. And really, the motive is to make it a better place to work. Stability test is the first thing you're going to do. You're going to take a test and self-evaluate. We've completed this in a couple of hundred cities. It was developed by a group of experts, mostly in the Tulsa area, trying to identify what we should evaluate as a city to see how we're doing. So the first question on the test, and you're going to give a score. You should have a score sheet in front of you. I'm going to explain each question, and you're going to give a score from 1 to 10. The first question is how financially stable is your city? We go to the cities that are flat broke, and we go to cities in which the elected officials don't have any idea whether their city is stable or not. And this question is first because it should be. As elected officials, you have an obligation at some point to understand the finances of your city. So you're going to give a score between 1 and 10. A 10 is you have a written policy that requires 20% general fund as a reserve, and you fully fund it. We know Stillwater has a history of being financially stable. We know we've been in cities in which they've all written down a 1, and you're not one of those. We also know there's different levels of reporting to the elected officials, and that's one of the problems we've run across across the state, is that some elected officials get no financial information. We've had a council member answer this question by saying, I have no idea. I've only been on council 15 years. He was completely honest. And we shouldn't operate that way. So we're going to ask you to give a score between 1 and 10 of how financially stable you think your city is. Again, it's not to judge, it's to evaluate. If you don't know, that's fine. You don't know. But over time, you will.
So I'm going to ask a question.
Sure.
I've been on council one month. I don't know.
That's fine. Wouldn't expect you to. But the reason this question is on the test by the experts we worked with is that that is a part of your job. And a part of what we're identifying is, what is your job to be a councilman? And this is one of them. Long-term financial stability for the city to make sure you can make good decisions. Again, we've been in cities that are completely broke, and they always ask, I've been here a month, how did we get to this point? Because over the last 50 years, there was not a policy, there was not a procedure, there was not a long-range plan of how to get to this point. Okay, so that's the first question. And feel free to ask whatever questions you have. Question number two is, how's the governing body? How stable is your governing body? A high score is, we have great, well-informed, engaged elected officials when we've had elections. Most candidates have been well-qualified. We attract and retain good people. It should be an honor to serve on your city council, and that should be the standard we set by our behavior and by our expectations. So a high score is that we meet that. A low score is you look around and say, I wish we could throw them all out and start over because it is a revolving door. We have members who do not have good intentions, and they're not qualified to make decisions for our city. It should be an honor to serve on the city council in the city of Stillwater. And that should be the standard that each of you has set and upholds because it is one of your obligations as an elected official. So how do you evaluate each other? And you'll notice, we don't take the test. So give a score between 1 and 10 of how you evaluate the city council. Question number three is, how do you evaluate your city council meetings? High score is, they're professional, they're businesslike, you enjoy attending them, you hope you never miss one because you enjoy the work you're doing. That should be our goal as council members, shouldn't it? A low score is, they're miserable, and I hope I never go to another one. Not a good way to live. Again, I'm jaded because out of my first 1,000, over 900 of them would have gotten a 1, and it was a miserable way to work.
I think the joy to attend is a pretty high bar.
It is a high bar.
I enjoy the work we do, but a joy to attend.
You know, a few years ago, and we did a survey in the Tulsa area to ask this question. What could we do to make city council meetings more enjoyable? And we got an interesting answer from the city of Jinks that none of us knew. They served food at all their meetings for their elected officials because with a 5:30 or 6 o'clock meeting, they didn't have time to go eat. So they had snacks, and they'd done that for years. They just didn't want anybody else to know. But it made it more enjoyable because they weren't late getting home and getting to eat. Anyway.
The mayor and I were just talking about that. We used to do that, and then we didn't during the pandemic. We think we should bring it back, maybe at least once a month.
Your challenge is to find a way to make it more enjoyable for those who are going to serve with you in the future. And it should be, shouldn't it? Number four, how do you rate the workforce? That's very difficult in a city this size. A high score is employees who work hard and care about the city, that enjoy their work. Some of them stay a very long time because it's such a good place to work, right, Norman?
That's right.
That should be the goal. Your goal as a board of directors for this municipal corporation should be to make sure that it's a good place to work. And how do you do that in a council manager, former government, without meddling in personnel? Because you are precluded from meddling in personnel. But you do set the policies for the city. And the policy of making it a good place to work goes into benefits, insurance, and budget. Low score is that city that's just a continuous revolving door, has a hard time hiring anyone, has a hard time retaining employees, and has a hard time being a stable workplace. Okay? Your job, though, is very similar to that of a board of directors of any other corporation, and that is to establish a culture for the workforce, even though you're not directly involved in supervising them. Part five, what's the public image of your city? High score is usually that city doesn't have a lot of public input at the meetings. The public trusts you to make decisions for this region of the state. They have a high level of confidence in you as a governing body to make good decisions for their city. Low score is usually that city in which we see there's no public confidence. And usually in those cities, every meeting is a standing-room-only meeting. So what's the public image of your city? And it's a very difficult thing to measure, but our goal as a governing body is to improve the image of our city and to make it better. Part six is one we sometimes overlook and don't put enough thought into. But how well are we prepared to deal with a crisis? Government exists to deal with those disasters that happen because the public expects us to be ready for it. Crisis management's an important part of city government. And it's not just police and fire. It's whatever may come along that the public expects the city to be prepared, whether it's a pandemic, whether it's a tornado, whatever it may be. A high score is, we know what our role is, we're prepared, we have policies in place to deal with it, and we have people in place who know what they're doing. Low score is, we live in a crisis. We haven't put any thought into that yet. And we have cities who don't. Okay? Number seven, what's the city's role in economic development? It's interesting, as we've traveled around the state, some cities are very active in economic development projects. Some have made the decision that that's not the role of government, that it's entirely up to the private sector to drive the economy. So you're asked with this question, how active are you as an organization in economic development projects? The higher score, the more active you are. It's really that straightforward. We know that when we go to densely populated western Oklahoma areas, they're less active. We know that high-traffic areas are more involved because there's more demand. We know generally in the metro areas, there's much more competition for economic development Part eight, planning and goal setting. How well do you set goals for the city, and how well do you plan out the future? It's interesting that everyone in the city of Stillwater, or many, will have an opinion about what Stillwater should be in the future. And there are five of you who have been trusted with making that decision and mapping out your future. And it is an extremely important part of your job. Planning and goal setting will determine where you go. And if we study those cities who have been very successful, they've done a good job of this. It is interesting, and I've never worked, very minimal amount of work for the city of Jinks, but Jinks is an interesting city to study historically. 30 years ago, it was about 5,000 population. They didn't get a world-class aquarium by accident. And they haven't grown to 30,000 in population and built substantial financial reserves, all by accident. It's all happened by design. And it's happened by design because they've been very stable in management and very stable in governing body over a long period of time. Other cities, we could but won't name, have been a disaster for the last 30 years and haven't had the level of improvement. And that's by design, too. They've chosen to be that way. And I think some of it comes to this question, how well are we putting thought into what we want Stillwater to be 10 years, 20 years from now? Because there are five of you who get to map that out and no one else. So how well do we do Number nine, and this is not directed at Norman, the upper management of the city, how stable is it? And you really should answer that because we know from the private sector that stable management leads to greater results over time than those companies that have consistent turnover. So how stable is the upper management of the city? Is it a good place to work for upper management? Because it should be. Or is it one of those cities in which it's hard to maintain management? You're in a unique position because you're going through a search, and this is going to get tested in the future. How good a job is it for Norman? And how good a job is it going to be for the next person? Because you can be sure that those who are interested in this job are going to want to know what it's like to work here. I hope they want to know that. How stable has it been? How long has he been here? And what were the difficulties and the challenges of it? And how are the group of you to work for? Because the next manager's going to ask, do I have a boss with a single voice, or do I have five individuals who tell me five different things? And that will become very important to you. I think you're going to see that in coming months. This question's asking about stability and administration. How stable has it been? Because your goal should be to be stable in management because that's the only way you're going to be successful. We know that from those who have not been because there have been some cities who have had constant turnover and usually followed by constant failure, many times financial failure. And question number 10 is, how well do we communicate as an organization? High score is, we're getting the information we need to make decisions. We do a good job of getting information out to the public. We do a good job of communicating internally. Low score is, I wish somebody'd tell me what's going on around here. Okay, so that's the test. Again, the purpose is not to judge. We'll collect the scores. We'll get you a composite score back. We actually did this test earlier with your department head, so we will provide that information later to Norman, so you can evaluate it and see what you think about it. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about what your job is. I know Mr. Harden's been here a month, so we're not going to pick on him too much yet.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, how long have you been on the council?
I was elected to council in 2016.
Okay. What's the best part about being mayor in Stillwater?
The best part about being mayor in Stillwater is, I mean, I think it's, for me, it's being able to take part in helping the city I grew up in grow and improve and be part of what's next for this community.
How long have the others served? Mr. Clark, how long have you been on council?
14 months.
14 months, fairly new. Vice Mayor?
Let's see, I'm starting my second four-year term in almost five and a half years.
Okay. Ms. Hawkins?
Just under two years.
Okay, fairly new overall. We've been the cities in which there's been a long tenure for some, and some in which there's very little.
We, in 2016, we passed a charter change that moved us from three-year terms to four-year terms, and changed us from two elections, and then you had to sit out, to 12 total years. And so we've, I think, I think our tenures have probably gotten better over that timeframe.
That should help. Term limits has, or can have a downside by forcing very good public servants to go away. We know that with a 12-year maximum term, none of you are going to be here forever. And as an organization, really, the challenge should be, what legacy do you want to leave? What foundation do you want to have for the next group that comes along? And again, I'll go back to the mayor. What advice do you offer to the new board members? Mr. Harden's brand new. Have you had a chance to sit down with him and say, here's what to expect, and here's what is coming?
We talked a little bit in the process of him coming on, but I mean, my advice generally to people about council is that this is a pretty stable and good council to work with. I mean, the folks here, in my time, in seven years, I've always felt like everybody on the council works together well, and there's no, I don't know, underlying agendas that you have to worry about with folks. And so I generally tell people that you can come on, and as long as your approach is going to be broadly, you know, what's best for the community, and that you're not coming on to just focus on that one thing you really care about, then you'll do well here.
And I'll address that. I'll say, the city manager's been a big help. I've met with him a couple of times, and that's been a big help to hit the ground running.
Good. Good. What has been, for any of the five of you, the most difficult issue you've had to deal with as a council member? And, go ahead, you seem ready for that one.
A couple of us were here for the pandemic, so.
It was difficult for everyone.
Not even, not even close.
Yeah. We've done a lot of surveys of elected officials to ask them what, over time, will be their most difficult decision. And overwhelmingly, it is land use, zoning, those type of issues usually will be your most difficult because there usually will be competing interest, competing financial interest, and just more difficult than anything else. You've got to pick a side. And sometimes the right side is not the popular side. If you could change how you operate, what would you want to change? Vice Mayor, anything about how you currently operate you would like to see different?
How we operate as a council?
Yeah, as a group.
Oh, gosh. No, I mean, I think I would echo the mayor's comments. I think as a group, we work well together. I mean, everybody's respectful, everybody's thoughtful and intentional, studied, you know, knows what they're coming to meet about. I don't know, as a council, that I would change.
That's good, because we don't see that every place. And I think the most important word in that is the mutual respect. And if you have that and can sustain that over time, all of your jobs will be easier. Some cities struggle with not being able to disagree, and you've got to be able to be respectful when you disagree because that's going to happen. And getting to the point that you can do that and move on to the next item will be helpful for you. I'm going to leave, and we've left with your city attorney. One piece of work that I think may help you, I'd encourage you to look at it. And it goes to a very basic premise for the group of you. No one can regulate how you do business except the group of you. You're regulated by state law. Cities in general are amongst the most regulated groups, organizations in the country. Everything we do is regulated in some way. But I'm going to encourage you that you can make your service better for those who come after you by regulating how you operate. by regulating how you, as a council, will operate. And you can do that by having a council handbook that will set some standards. I thought it was interesting that your library board approved bylaws. I assume you don't have any. Charter?
Sort of.
Set some broad guidelines. This is our city council handbook in Sand Springs. And it is city council regulating how they do business so that, over a long period of time, we will avoid the instability of having changing ethics because we're going to have a written code of ethics that applies to the governing body, imposed on the governing body by themselves. We're going to set some restrictions on what can go on the agenda because they, by approving their handbook, have said they're not going to debate national political issues because the city can't control that. Some cities get caught up in that, and it becomes very difficult. It becomes difficult to make that decision about where to build stormwater when you spend your time debating national political issues. And that's not your job because you're not going to resolve it. But there are only five of you who can put those type of restrictions into how you do business. So I'll leave that with your city attorney. I would encourage you to look at it as a document that you can tailor to your own needs to set some guidelines about how you think this governing body should operate going into the future, well past your 12-year time. Because I think it would help build stability over a long period of time. We've had a handbook similar to this in Sand Springs for 10 or 15 years, probably. We review it annually. Every new member gets a copy and reviews it with the city manager and city attorney and goes through what the rules and regulations are of serving on this governing body so that they'll know what to expect and what is expected of them. And I think it helps. I think it helps build a comfort level. We're working toward having something like this for every board and commission of the city because we should. It's unfair for someone new to come on and not know what the rules and regulations are. So I would encourage you to look at that. And we'll get you whatever information we can that would help. I may have missed it. What is your role in Sand Springs? I'm city attorney. Been there 20 years. We've been through four managers during that time, probably. When I started, there was a manager who had been there 20 years who, this much time later, set a very important standard for the city because he helped establish a culture of how they would do business. Really, a culture of professionalism. And I would challenge that they do a lot of things right, not perfect. I got the benefit of starting there when they were operating at a very high level. I had done work in Coeida, and I like to describe it as being like a roller coaster. It was tremendous success followed by tremendous failure and a lot of instability. I worked in Manford after that, and it was probably the worst example of municipal government that's ever existed in Oklahoma for the first 10 years I was there. I had no role in changing it, or very, very little. I wasn't capable of changing it. It took a mayor who got elected there who said he was going to change it for a generation, and he has. It's one of the best-functioning cities in the state because of the council role and the job they do, not me. When I started in Sand Springs, I had those two experiences in the past. And I remember going to the mayor and asking a real simple question. Why is it different here? Why is this culture so different? Why is it so stable? And he had one of the smartest things I've ever heard from a mayor. He said, when he first got elected, the mayor at the time called him aside and said, I have one thing you need to do. And that is, as a council member, you need to respect the vote of those who serve with you. Because when you don't, your vote will become meaningless. And isn't that great advice? So that mutual respect amongst themselves really has been the culture that's been there the entire time I've been there. So I think my role has been to try to study that and figure out why it's that way there and not other places we go to. Why is it that we go to a city that has eight city managers in two years? Something's broken, something's wrong. So my role has been trying to figure that out. You know, with Kimberly I mentioned earlier, it's interesting trying to figure out what the city attorney's role should be. And I've had the liberty there of being given the opportunity to try to perpetuate the culture. And hopefully, that's a team effort by everyone. It should be. And if we identify it and then try to perpetuate it, I think it gets easier. So it's an interesting question, the role of the city attorney, isn't it? You're new. Hard to figure out sometimes, isn't it?
Can be.
Can be.
What am I here for?
Should be an enjoyable place to work, though, because if you don't make it enjoyable for all of your department heads, we know what's going to happen. They're going to go elsewhere. Right? Very good people will go elsewhere. And what does that do over time? I remember one of the Tulsa metro cities had a great mayor. And he just decided at the last minute not to run again. It wasn't the city I represented. They went through some horrible times after that. Your term limits is going to force some of that. You're going to get to 12 years with some of you. And your time's going to be up whether it needs to be or not, isn't it? Because the voters have said it is. So anyway, I would encourage you to look at those issues of, how do we get better at what we do? And a part of that challenge is going to come in hiring his successor. Because it's going to force the five of you to reevaluate how you do things. And you're going to have some difficult work ahead of you. You're going to have some difficult work in picking that successor and also in how they operate with five of you needing to be on the same page. I think we will leave with you the slides. I know you've had a long time in your meeting, mostly I'll just answer questions. Anything you have about stability test or anything any of you want to raise. I can tell you how we use the stability test in Sand Springs just because it's a good example for what works for them. We take the test annually. We have 10 years of history of reviewing what our scores are. Staff is challenged with figuring out how we can improve. We have four quarterly lunches a year with the council. Each of those is dedicated to two topics. One is a training component, four times a year, whether it's an update on Open Meetings Act or something. But it has some minimal training component. And it has the rest of the meeting devoted to one of the topics that's on the stability test. When we had a new city manager, the first topic on the test was communication with council. Because he wanted to make sure that he had one boss and not seven. They have seven council members. He wanted to set some ground rules of how they communicate. He wanted to know if he was watching a movie on a Saturday afternoon and got a text. Was he expected to step out and respond to a text from a council member? Or was he expected to respond at Monday morning at 8 o'clock? Because there shouldn't be five different sets of rules for five of you. And sometimes, there are. And those are the type issues you're going to have to face in the future. And I would encourage you to face them as a group. I like to encourage charter city councils to look at one simple thing in your charter. And your city attorney, I'm sure, is familiar with it. There's a long list of powers of the council. Probably, you've seen it. Look at the list of powers of individual council members. There are none. You have a tremendous amount of power as a group. You have none as an individual. The mayor has some as mayor. But as an individual council member, you have none. And that's by design because that's what's in the charter. So how do you exercise your power? There has to be a post of the agenda, there has to be notice to the public, and there has to be a meeting. And three of you have to vote that way. So my point of all of that is, we have a new city manager who wanted to know what's expected in communicating with council. I'm not going to have seven different sets of rules. I want to have one. Tell me what the one set of rules is. How are you going to evaluate your next city manager? Can't be five different ways, it's got to be one way. And those are going to be challenges that you face to continue the stability you've had. Stillwater's been known as a great, well-managed, well-run, financially-stable city for a long time. And the group of you, good or bad, you took a job with the Yankees, not with the last-place team. And it's harder to sustain it than it is to start from nothing and get good, isn't it? And that really is a challenge for you. You have, because of that, you have a much greater obligation than a person who starts with a horrible city. Bill, what do you want to add? You usually have words of wisdom for someone other than about chickens?
They weren't here for that. They don't know about chickens. George Burns used to say, "Gracie, good night, Gracie." What else can we talk to you on?
We need you at the microphone, we're broadcasting.
Well, that means you got to scoot over. We're really grateful to have the opportunity to bring this training to you all. And I just echo what David says. You all have a long history of being very well-managed. So it's a pleasure to be representing OMAG here. And we'll get the information back to you. We're available to you for any consult at any time. And so thank you all for having us out this evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Counselors, anything further? Nothing else on the agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn city council. Please vote. The vote of 5 to 0, this order, city council is now adjourned.